There we go.
Ready to go?
All right, uh, welcome to the City of Bend Accessibility Advisory Committee meeting for November twentieth, uh, starting at one oh one P M. It's in council chambers with some of us on Zoom. Um, first, we're gonna do roll call and welcome. Uh, I guess I'll go first, uh, John Healan Chair.
This is Carl Burnett online, um. We're doing self description.
Ah, yes, sorry. I'm in Alaska right now, so I'm a little discombobulated. Uh, this is John Healan, I am Chair, I am online, I have headphones on and a big head, you know, mustache, and I'm a white male, wearing a T-shirt.
Carl Burnett online, um. Uh, I'm a white guy with a beard and glasses and a blue and white striped sweater.
Uh, this is Aaron Rivers, I'm attending online, I'm a white male with short dark hair, wearing headphones, and a gray hoodie.
Uh, hi, this is Liz Deetha Martin for Variety, I'm a white woman, um, with long hair, uh, and glasses, uh, she/her, and I think that's it.
This is Ian Isaacson, I'm in council chambers, I have short brown hair, sunglasses on the top of my head and a blue jacket.
This is Amanda Hamer, I am in council chambers and I'm wearing, um, I have, uh, my hair is up now, but it's graying brown hair, and, um, I will have reading glasses on and off, because I'm still getting used to them, you'd think I'd be used to them by now, but I'm not, um, when I'm wearing a blue sweater.
Hi, this is Stephanie, um, Etsman, I don't know what my name is. Um, I'm in council chambers, I'm a white woman, um, with long brown curly hair, wearing a brown dress and glasses.
Is that it?
Yep.
Oh, sorry, Bob Townsend, Cascades East Transit, uh, Director, I'm online, um, a white male bald with a blue sweatshirt today. Great, all right, moving on, um, here's the City of Bend land acknowledgement statement, there's a change. Based on consultation with the Warm Springs Tribal Council, City Council has moved away from reading the land acknowledgement at every council meeting and will be migrating towards a sovereignty acknowledgement, which is currently being developed. We honor this request at this meeting and in its stead would like to share some opportunities to directly support and engage with the Warm Springs community. This can be an evolving list that can be added on to and distributed while the sovereignty acknowledgement development proceeds. All right, moving on, item number three, approval of the October twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five draft minutes. Are there any corrections?
I think there were some corrections that were already made, right, so we're voting on the amended ones.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the amended minutes from October twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five?
Yeah, this is Carl, I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
We're, we're, no, um, forgot to mention, we are actually no longer doing the first and the second, we're gonna go ahead and just raise a hand, the majority.
Oh, okay. Great, all in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item number four, their city council update is Counselor Mendez in chambers or online?
Thanks so much, John, uh, good afternoon, this is Counselor Ariel Mendez, I am a white male in my, uh, mid to late forties, I have short, um, short, uh, blonde hair, uh, and I'm wearing a button-down shirt with a, a gray jacket. Um, couple things from City Council, uh, we received an update on, uh, city hall planning, so this is still in, I would say, the pretty preliminary stages, there's a lot of design considerations here. First and foremost is the administrative needs of the city, we've simply outgrown our existing buildings and looking ahead, there's no way to continue to provide the kinds of services, uh, especially from the administrative side, that we need in, in the years to come by staying here in our current configuration, so we had some discussion about expanding, uh, in the core area where there's not only the goal to provide administrative services and office space, but also the opportunity to, uh, catalyze, uh, economic activity in that area. We also discussed the desire to continue to provide some kind of, um, economic support for the downtown area here where this building is. Uh, we did talk about the importance of accessibility and, um, uh, one counselor raised accessibility concerns about council chambers here. Um, so I wanted to let you know that at least that is a value that is, is being considered and I think is important. The, at one of our recent meetings, we heard from a community member who described how difficult it is to navigate things like roundabouts while, while getting around without eyesight. Uh, we will be discussing our standards and specifications for how we design our streets on January twenty-eighth, so that is something to keep in mind. Uh, I do think that we have, we have over fifty roundabouts in Bend, and I don't think they're going away, but I think this is an opportunity to consider that roundabouts do have mixed effects. Uh, they tend to have fewer crashes, they keep traffic flowing, they are lower in terms of long-term costs, but their design really matters and all the things like single versus multi-lane or angled versus straight crosswalks, um, the speed of drivers, et cetera, uh, all of these things affect their accessibility, so I see this as an opportunity to uh, focus on what are the most accessible designs for roundabouts, it's, it's, you know, we are kind of at the forefront here, there's not too many cities that have as many roundabouts as we do, um, but I expect that's something that, that will come up in our, our conversations. Also, next year, we have, uh, two items relating to transportation, one is we will be getting our, beginning our sidewalk and bicycle facility master plans, those are two separate plans that will not just identify gaps and failed sections, but I would like to also see us take a, a different approach on things like maintenance, we do rely on private property owners for things like clearing snow, uh, or even just basic maintenance of sidewalks and it's, that's a pretty uneven approach, uh, so hopefully this will be an opportunity for us to consider what kind of steps the city can take to try to provide uh, things like snow clearing on priority routes as well. And then, uh, just so you know, since we have discussed transit in the past, it's, I, I know Bob Townsend is, is, uh, joining us, he will be presenting in the early part of next year to council, the, the, uh, the plans for how to use the, the new funding that the legislature approved for transit, it was a two-year temporary increase in payroll tax revenue that will be earmarked for transit, I've had conversations with Bob Townsend about this, I'm glad to see that he's going to be prioritizing uh, increased service rather than capital purchases. I think that's really important to demonstrate what we can do with better funding when it comes to transit, but I also want to say there's a big asterisk here because there is an effort to put that, uh, transit funding along with the other transportation funding back on the ballot next year in the form of a referendum. And the key issue here that is not always covered in, in the stories about it is if they get enough signatures and they need something like seventy-eight thousand or something like that, if they get enough signatures, all of the, the funding that was just passed by the legislature gets paused until November twenty-twenty-six when voters either give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down. So that means that all of the layoffs that we've been talking about for ODOT, the winter maintenance concerns, yes, the transit funding too, all of that will potentially be put on pause just if enough people sign to put this back on the ballot next year, so that would be an entire year delay for this funding, and I don't know that people who put up the no-tax signs at places like gas stations recognize that, this is not just about having voters weigh in, this is actually about delaying all of that funding for an entire year. Um, so that's a pretty, pretty important piece. Uh, last thing is, I had my third lunch with committee members, um, I'd like to do this once a quarter, it was a great opportunity to hear what kind of things you, you hope to gain by serving on your committees. Uh, if lunchtime doesn't work for you and you would like to chat, please reach out. If, um, you want to grab coffee or just chat by telephone, uh, please just send me an email or call my city phone or send me a text. And that's all I have for today, um, I apologize, I have to run to teach class in a little bit, but, um, thank you.
Thanks, Ariel, this is Amanda, did you, on the twenty-eighth of January, sorry, what, will the discussion be about?
So every year we revisit our design standards and specifications for streets, typically it's a small update, um, to provide some kind of annual update. My expectation is that this year we will have the opportunity to do more, it's been several years since we've had a bigger update, and I think there is a desire on council to revisit, uh, more than just a small update, so I think the, the conversation on the twenty-eighth will be kind of the first preliminary conversation, and then there will be more to come.
Cool, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, well, if there's anything that does come up, uh, don't hesitate to send me an email, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mendez. All right, moving on to agenda item number five, public comment, limited to two minutes each. Is there any member of the public either in person or online that would like to make public comment to this body?
Yes, this is Lisa Larson, I go by she/her, I'm the Administrative Support Specialist for the City of Bend and Equity, or Accessibility Equity Department, we have one online, um, would you like to raise your hand if you want to leave um, a comment? Nicholas Brusking? Sorry if I'm messing that name up. He does, okay. Okay, go ahead and unmute.
I am, uh, with, um, Walker Macy.
Looks like you're back on mute, Nicholas.
Uh, yes, uh, I'm, I'm with Walker Macy, um, and we're, we're working with the City Honor Project, uh, for an agenda item that's, uh, later on today's meeting.
Glad you're with us, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, with that, uh, we'll move on to agenda, agenda item number six, the Hawthorne Ped Bike Bridge. Um, we have Garrett Sabrin, Principal Engineer from the City of Bend, online it looks like. Um, Garrett, would you like to begin?
I'm changing my audio, is that working now?
Yeah.
Yep, we can hear you now.
Great. Um, thank you for the introduction, I will, I'm new to the, the descriptors at the beginning, so I'll do my best here, um, um, in my early forties, uh, white male, wearing a gray shirt, I'm bald, blue eyes. Um, there are a few people online here who are part of our design team for the Hawthorne Overcrossing Project. They've logged on with my name because, um, I'm actually on parental leave right now and I've done a horrible job at coordinating the invites, um, so Craig Taughton and, uh, Mike Silas and then Nicholas who just spoke, so they're, they're here, they, they're the ones who are, you know, putting a lot of time in working on this design as it's advancing, and they're the ones who um, could respond to any, you know, major technical questions or if we want to get into any, any longer discussion around different design considerations, um, I'll just kind of high, high level for this group, um, I've been reaching out to Cassandra here over the last month, so pretty, uh, short-term, I appreciate you guys getting us on the schedule, um, and with such, such short notice, but the goal was to try to start talking to this committee and, um, working with you a bit on consideration of the, the ramps approaching the Hawthorne Overcrossing Bridge, we, we did come to this committee about three years ago, almost exactly three years ago and about three months if I remember right. Uh, myself and Allison Platt had, had presented and talked about just different, um, alignments for the bridge, so we were, look, you know, I'll show a couple examples of those, so we got some input from you as well as we went to the community on that, and now we're actually in design phase hoping to begin construction here in a couple of years, and so, um, the team who's online here along with, you know, several other people on, on the project are starting to progress that, uh, selected alignment and, um, look at the grades associated with it and the landings and just get into the details. Um, we've always known that it was gonna be a, a steeper approach that, you know, would still meet ADA or accessibility requirements, however, it's, it's on the steeper side of those, and so we'd like to use this group and hopefully you can reach out to some of, um, some of the individuals in the community who you represent as well and just the knowledge that you have to, um, help us make some decisions around the, the design, and we'll go into some of those details. Um, I think the question for me at the end of this is gonna be, do you, do you want to try to start responding and providing input now, or I just sent, uh, Cassandra these slides this morning because we've been just, you know, getting things together, she could share them with you, we could come back in December, or, you know, the, the third option here is that we have an open house that just started yesterday, it's a two-week virtual open house, and then on December second, it will be in-person, and we can collect input through that as individual, um, people here, I don't know how you guys like to work as far as having consensus with input or just individual input, and if you wanted to, you know, put your title with it through our open house process, that would work too, so some options throwing out there, happy to come back, would love to come back, um, you know, and, and just kind of meet, I guess, to whatever your, your desire would be here, um, and appreciate any input. I'm gonna run through these slides pretty quick, um, and then we'll just open it up and you guys can, um, let me know if you want me to elaborate more or if, if there's something else that you want to cover at this point, I, I think it's my understanding that this is a relatively quick agenda item. Um, so this is a little bit of reminder of the two, the twenty-twenty-two, uh, bridge approaches that we were looking at, so we had three options that we brought to this committee for discussion along with the community. Option one here, the straight approach is ultimately what we went with and what we got the most support um, with from the community as well as, as this committee. Um, that was the one that's a steeper grade, so it's, it's hard to see here, but it's noted that we were targeting that this would be about a seven-point-five percent slope. Um, and so for anybody who doesn't quite know what that looks like, that's kind of a typical uh, ramp, you know, usually ramps are right around seven and a half, eight percent, that, the ones that go from a landing into the street. Um, there's some road examples around town too that are around seven percent, and then at our open house, uh, Craig, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we'll have a ramp there that shows some of these, these grades that we're looking at, so you can get a better visual of them um, in the coming weeks here. Uh, the other concept, how to switch back on it, there was some input from this committee, I'm not liking that because of these turning radiuses and challenges, um, with, uh, bikes going around those, and then the last one was elevators and stairs, which I think most people in the community along with this committee were, were relatively opposed to just from maintenance and safety and, um, those, you know, the, the breaking down of elevators, et cetera, so we went out to the community on those items, um, this one on the left here, the forty-two percent Hawthorne is just saying most of the input that we got of the two hundred people during the feasibility study wanted to see Hawthorne be the first project that moved forward. Um, we didn't have the same scenarios laid out back then of like the quick build on Greenwood and the full build on Franklin, et cetera, so it's, it's not apples to apples with where we're at today. And then as far as the concepts one through three go, um, you know, sixty-six percent were for Concept One, which is that straight approach ramp, so just some reminders of, of some of these previous, uh, discussions and community engagement, um, points in the project. So, since all of that, we've got, um, we've received federal grant funds along with some state funds, our, our local contribution for this project, um, is, is relatively low, under a million dollars, um, for a thirty-two million dollar budget. And so we have started to move that project forward, ODOT is actually managing it for us because of the FHWA funds. Um, so this top line showing starting design in mid-twenty-five, ending in mid-twenty-seven, and then construction around late twenty-seven, early twenty-eight, just want to highlight our overall schedule, um, hoping to start construction late twenty-seven, early twenty-eight. And then we're gonna have several opportunities, um, to connect with the community, and then we're gonna be using council as, uh, a decision-making body on, you know, several stages with the, the design progression. And so these first two, you know, we just had a council check-in, the team just updated the bridge structure concept and visual that's moving forward, I'll show a quick, um, snip of that. And then, uh, we have the public meeting that, as I mentioned, just started yesterday, we're going back to council in January, and we're hoping to follow that up with another public meeting. And then, um, another council, council check-in probably, you know, in, in summer of twenty-seven. Um, by the time we get to summer twenty-seven, we're gonna mostly have a lot of the details pinned down for the design, it's just gonna be continuing to progress those and refine them. Um, so the next two community open house opportunities are when we're making a lot of decisions around details, aesthetics and, uh, lighting and these ramps and the street improvements, it's, et cetera, so we're trying to progress through those relatively quickly here over the next six months. And then the last thing here, council, just so everyone's aware, council recently approved the, what we're calling right now the Hawthorne Connections Concept. Um, it's not a, it's not a dating app, I'm just thinking as I'm reading it, um, but it's, it's extending Hawthorne from where our, our scope limits are uh, with the overcrossing right now, which it basically goes to Harriman on the west side and the Third Street on the east side, but not across Third Street, so we're starting this next phase of work to, to roll, um, relatively closely to, to the federal funded, funded portion that would extend to Juniper to the east and extend down to Franklin or the Bend Bike Way to the west, so south on Harriman. Um, here's a look at what we have scoped within the federal funds, as I mentioned, Harriman to Third. Uh, you, this dark orange that goes just to the east side of Hill Street is where the bridge would land at, street grade, and then on the west side, or sorry, on the east side, um, just prior to Second Street, and this varies a little bit as you'll see in the upcoming concepts. Um, the structure type, this was presented to council as an update, uh, not very long ago, week and a half ago or so, um, and this is what's advancing forward as far as structure aesthetics, there's a lot of details, I don't know if the team cringes about showing it right now or not, they're very, they're very, uh, into the details and very meticulous, so it's, it's a work in progress. So, this is, this is the meat and potatoes of what I was talking about as far as the ramp options, um, right now there's three developed. Um, there's a couple of notes for those of you who are able to, to read the notes on the bottom left here, this is what I'll first read through um, on each one of these, so this is a, a seven-point-three percent slope on the east approach, so going from the bridge um, down towards Second Street, and this is how we had originally drawn it when we were looking at the profile, is, is just being five-foot landing, so um, you basically go down at seven-point-three percent for thirty feet, and then have, uh, uh, under two percent landing area, that's five feet wide, and that just continues all the way down here, and that's how we have, what we'd have to do to, to meet ADA requirements or accessibility requirements. One, um, I guess that's just for this one here, there's one right in the middle here, so this is what, a four-hundred-and-seventy-five-foot run of, of that seven-point-three percent with landings, intermittent landings. Um, they also are showing a thirty-foot landing right in the middle of it, right, so at that roughly two-hundred-and-thirty or forty-foot mark, you would have a thirty-foot wide landing, so a, a larger one, potentially a resting area in there, uh, there's design details to come around that of, you know, whether you have like a bump out and bench, et cetera. Um, so this is one option, I think the thing to remember is the seven percent slope, five percent landings or five-foot landings, and then this one middle resting area. Option two, it gets a little bit larger landings instead of five feet, um, moving it up to eight feet, and you know, one of the things I think about here with the eight-foot is like our, our ped refuge or median islands that we have when we're crossing a road. Um, our city standards like to see a minimum of eight feet there, and we think about like larger cargo bikes or, you know, different sort of, um, I guess bikes with trailers, stuff like that where you want a little bit more space so it's not hanging out into the road, so that's one of the thoughts here, having those longer landings, is there's just more space there, it's not quite as tight of a five-foot landing, and then there's a couple intermittent twenty-foot landings that are worked in here um, as well, so, you know, about a third and a third, third way down, third way up. And then, on each of these, as we continue through them, there's three of them, you can see where it would, where the, the bridge would um, match the current street level of Hawthorne, it, it goes a little bit farther to the east, so we keep getting a little bit farther to the east, a little bit closer to the Bottle Drops driveway. Yeah, minor detail there, but anyways, this one's seven-point-six percent with the design that they have, so slightly steeper than the previous seven-point-three. And then the third option here, I went to it, there we go, um, so not quite as steep, six-point-nine percent. Um, there's twelve, or sorry, there's four of the twelve-foot landings worked in here, and then the others are five feet, so um, it's basically going, you know, a two-five feet and then one twelve-foot, two-five feet, one twelve-foot. Um, so those can act as, as more resting points along the way, and there can be details, it's just having a little bit more spacing there and it reduces that overall slope a little bit.
In the, uh, list of options.
Craig, maybe you can correct me here, because it, it shows these being twelve-foot landings times four, but then here it says four extended twenty-foot landings every third.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
It was supposed to say twenty and not twelve.
Though, those landings are, are twelve feet in this option, so the, the lower portion, uh, should read twelve instead of twenty feet. Yeah, and the, the thinking behind twelve feet.
I'll keep talking, I can't hear him, but he's also listed as Garrett as a reminder here.
Oh, can you hear me now?
You're unmuted again if you want to try talking.
Okay, great, um, yeah, the, it should be twelve feet, um, the intention for this option was twelve feet.
We can't hear you, I'll keep going, um, and then there's the west side of the bridge.
We can hear, it's just that Garrett can't hear.
Are you guys still able to hear me? I can't hear Carl, but it looks like Carl's trying to talk.
We can hear you.
You can hear me. Okay, I just can't hear you. So was Craig talking before? Oh, sorry, Craig.
You can't hear who?
I hear you now, sorry.
Garrett, can you hear me now?
Yes, 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 I, my speaker wasn't working right, I was speaking over everybody probably, I apologize for that.
Okay.
It's twelve.
It's twelve, yes, yep, yeah, it's twelve, and our, our thinking behind twelve, um, as setting those as interim is, um, we think that gives us, uh, just enough space that potentially you could incorporate a, a bump out with a, a bench and a, the space that a wheelchair could tuck in. Um, and that's kind of the minimum that we think we could do if we wanted to achieve that.
Do you think that's a pretty, this is Liz online, uh, Liz Deetha Martin, um, is the, the six-point-nine or the seven percent, uh, grade, is that a pretty athletic uh, grade for that long of a distance? I, and I would say I have used, uh, ramps with these, kind of those rest spots, those, those little flat spots. I find them pretty easy to use on a bike, but I'm also a hill climber, so, I don't know.
This is Carl. I'm happy to chime in on this. I'm, I'm so divided about this, uh, this thing. And, and the reason is I can see for myself using this in two different ways. Right? One as a, a wheelchair user and let's say pedestrian and one as, um, a cyclist, non cyclist. And the needs are quite different, right? Like when you're biking, you kind of expect a consistent slope, like, like you'd find on a street, you know, on a hill. But when you're in pedestrian mode, that's when these, these, uh, these ramps with level landings in between are nice to have. And, and, you know, I guess it sounds like they, they have to build this as though it's a ramp and not as though it's a street, even though in some ways to me this functions as like more as a bike and pedestrian street than as a like ramp to get into a building kind of thing, you know? It's kind of, it's kind of weird. It's neither this nor that, right?
If I remember correctly, like we discounted the switchback idea because of like recumbent bikes and trying to take those corners. And so we agreed that, uh, even though the slope was pretty extreme, we would prefer a consistent slope. But then I'm guessing for clearance on First Street for vehicles and stuff, that they're having to do this kind of like step thing just to make the non-switchback work.
Yeah. And, and I don't think, I don't think it's extreme. I mean, these are, these are within ADA allowances. So we're not talking like a crazy steep ramp here, but as, as they pointed out, it's sort of where the steeper end of what's, what's allowed. But again, that's, that's what's allowed for ramps, not what's allowed for streets, because streets can be, you know, much steeper sometimes.
We, we do have, um, and I guess guiding standards that, that require us to meet those accessibility or pro ag requirements. Um, and so I get the interpretation of this being like a standalone street, but, you know, being a a federal project managed by ODOT, um, along with all those standards, there's no way that we're going to get away from doing landings on this. Um, and for anybody to consider that to be, uh, acceptable, I guess. And and like you said, if there's someone who's not on a bike going down this, um, and just in a wheelchair, I think that would be a, uh, different consideration, right? If it was just bikes that were going across here. Um, I, I think it's interesting too, just with the extended landings to think about those, those bike users, right? Of, you know, if you have a five-foot landing, is it like a jump, but a twelve-foot landing is a little bit smoother transition to roll through. And it's obviously a little bit of speed, um, management too, I would think, which is likely a good thing with this being a shared facility.
I was thinking about that too, Garrett, descending this on my bike. It's gonna be like, whiffle, whiffle.
I'm more concerned about descending at this grade on the other side, on the west side, when you T-bone right into Hill Street and how we're going to protect people from building up momentum coming down that ramp onto Hill Street. And there's like active traffic on it.
This is Lisa. Can you guys please mention your name prior to commenting?
Oh, sorry. This is John Halen. Um, I made the comments about, uh, the steep downgrade down to Hill Street on the west side of the bridge.
Yeah. Thank you.
I keep going through, this is Garrett Saber, and again, I keep going through the west side. Um, there's just two slides and then I guess you guys could discuss whether you want to provide comments or you'd like us to return or, or individually do comments through our open house process. Um, so the West Bridge side, there's not as much flexibility here as John had just highlighted. Hill Street's right, relatively close, um, to that west side. So, you know, with the clearance requirements of getting over BNSF uh, railroad, that puts the bridge up pretty high. And it's just a matter of trying to get it backed down quick enough that you can have a little bit of of space at street level prior to Hill Street. And then the design team is definitely thinking a lot about, uh, considerations there of speed management and and, uh, traffic control measures as you approach that intersection, knowing that's going to be shared with vehicles and pedestrians and, and all users. So um, the two options here are, you know, the first one has an intermittent twenty-foot landing with the five-foot landings, um, spaced, you know, in between, you know, roughly thirty feet, um, in between the seven point three or four percent slope that's descending or climbing in the other direction. This one's also a seven point four percent slope. Um, and it just changes the landing width to eight feet. Um, without that intermittent, uh, twenty-foot landing. So they're all just a little bit wider and, and it's almost the exact same distance from the intersection. I think it's a few feet different, right? So fifty-seven feet to forty-five. So twelve feet closer, um, with the other option, which both of those are pretty close to the Hill Street intersection, but and, and relatively steep. That's all the slides we have.
This is John. It's too bad. We can't just do like an initial eight percent and then finish it out with like a three percent just to like, like, make the transition onto Hill Street just a little bit more, uh, I don't know, less, uh, like, I don't know, a pinball machine, I guess.
Hmm.
Oh, there's John. Are there any questions for Garrett? Oh, Garrett, I do actually have a question. This is John again. Um, is Hawthorne going to be closed entirely to traffic from ninety-seven?
Yes, uh, from ninety-seven and to ninety-seven. Um, and we have already worked with ODOT to update the Parkway plan to memorialize that in their, their state plan. The closure is planned to be when construction starts. That'd be the end of twenty-seven. As soon as construction starts, we'll close it.
Uh, this is John again. I don't suppose, I mean, if we there's not really a way. I know that, that Hawthorne kind of goes uphill until it hits where the visit bend office is, or it's relatively flat. I don't suppose that there's any way we could just skip over Hill Street and come down on the next street. Just to make that grade a little bit better.
Not at this point.
This is, this is Liz Deetha Martin online. Also, uh, I feel the same way about Third. Could we just get past Third? It's not the funnest place to, you know, wait at the light next to hot cars spewing, you know, hot air from their air conditioners or, you know, coal or diesel fumes or whatever. But I know that's not what you're trying to solve, but, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll respond though. This is Garrett. Um, you know, that the extension portion of the project is gonna start probably next month. Um, at least to get us some concepts and estimates that we can bring back to council in June of next year. And we will have a public open house and we will start talking with some of the adjacent, um, stakeholders like, um, Bob Townsend, who's, who's online here with CET as well as, um, the large development on the east side of Third Street. Um, to start seeing what options we have, you know, with consideration of all the different stakeholders in that area. It's, it is a, it's a big challenge. It's a tough one.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Thank you.
This is Carl. I'll chime in. I mean, this is such an exciting, um, bridge because, you know, it, it provides the biggest piece of connectivity that I think is missing for, um, you know, cyclist and pedestrian routes all over town. And, and I guess, you know, at, at first I was thinking like, well, we need, need a complete plan for connecting what goes on the east and west sides of the bridge. And I do think that, but once this is built, you know, we could we could build more stuff in the future that connects to it. Um, so it's, it's not like it's not like whatever is at the ends of this bridge, um, once it's built, needs to be what's there forever, I suppose. That was something my thought process.
This is Garrett. I think that was well said, Carl. Uh, when you're doing, you know, when you're building a city and um, progressing, you know, your, your infrastructure, it is, uh, you would kind of chip away at things, right? And, and we have the Ben Bikeway. We're fortunate right now. We have a lot going on. We have the Ben Bikeway project over on Franklin that we're going to be able to connect to on both the east and west ends of this, if all the funding scenarios work out. So I would say we're kind of accelerating or expediting the process of connecting this more so than what we might. And it, but it may be a a incremental improvement even. It might be, here's what we're doing today with the way that this core area is currently utilized and businesses currently operate. And as it rebuilds, that, that will likely evolve with it. People may, you know, the team here is talking a lot about shared streets and um, trying to have, you know, really low speed, low volume streets, which is probably the long-term vision here when we start seeing more housing and businesses. And so yeah.
Great. Um, this is John. Um, in order to keep on top of the agenda, are there any other comments before we move on?
John, I just have a question. Um, Garrett, can you tell us the best way for COBAC to continue to engage? Would you like to come back to the December meeting? Are they invited? Or could you provide details regarding the open house coming up? How best can they continue to give this really good input, um, as we move through?
Yeah. So I, I had emailed over the presentation like this morning. So if you wouldn't mind sending that or having that sent to the committee. Um, on the schedule slide, I have some details related to the open house. Uh, there's a link to the online portion that's going to be available for two weeks till December ninth. Then we'll be in person on December second at, at Dogwood, um, which is over by the Bottle Drop, uh, uh, Second and, and Hawthorne. Um, and that's going to be December second from four thirty to six thirty. I would say it's up to the committee here. We're, we're happy to collect individual input via the online open house where there's a comment section or, um, people can email me directly or, um, we can come back in, in December too and kind of summarize or see if we have the public input summarized at that point. That might be a little bit of a rush for it, but um, we are, we are going to council in January and we do want to make a decision before we go to council in January. So um, December would probably be appropriate if this committee would like to meet with us again.
Thanks for that information, Garrett, and your presentation.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, moving on to agenda item number seven, we have the Ben Parks and Rec Department letter update. So, um, there was a letter that I signed on to as, uh, Chair of COBAC, not as the committee itself, which we outlined uh, in the letter, that it was just my own kind of idea or support, not the entire committee. Um, and we outlined also the uh, issues that we had with some of the, about being asked so soon in the process to endorse a project. Um, in the end, I felt like it, you know, given Ben Parks and Rec's tradition of building accessible parks and also the fact that this will open up an entire stretch of trail that is typically cut off from a lot of users. Um, I signed on to a letter to DPRD for their grant application.
And John, this is Cassandra. If I could just add a little bit of that, um, sort of the rationale behind John being able to, um, provide overview of what COBAC discussed and some of the issues that came up and not originally endorsing the letter was not because of opposition, but rather, um, just a willingness to want to see more language around accessibility and promises insofar as the acquisition of those, um, those funds for the grant for the particular, uh, piece of land. And I believe that we had kind of a list that was provided to us, um, by Quinn, um, of the, the projected ideas around accessibility. We saw a map, um, and then upon advice from our city attorney's office, because Ben Parks and Rec, um, timeline was to submit, uh, letters of support and information at the very outset of November. We were in a bit of a time crunch because we wanted COBAC's, um, general mentality to be shared with, uh, Ben Parks and Rec. And so we received guidance that John could author a letter, um, uh, not representing COBAC, but as the chair to talk about exactly what was discussed during that, um, October meeting. Um, and then also the letter that was contemplated. So those things were included, um, as a result. And um, I believe I'm gonna share a slide that's next from Liz Woodfin, um, who is not here today, but also um, provided as, as outgoing chair, a little bit of, um, perspective on, on it. And I don't know, um, if anyone in council chambers or online would like to read it out loud, would appreciate that. But just to, um, put that on record of Liz's, um, in addition to what John had, uh, shared, but Liz's, um, comments as well. Thank you, John.
Of need be, I could read it. And this is John.
Sure, that'd be
In my professional role supporting people with disabilities, I'm seeing more and more barriers to accessing basic resources. Folks are facing hunger, imminent or literal homelessness, substance use struggles, and the effects of funding cuts that limit available support. Especially in times like these, opportunities to expand and create welcoming environments for our community members and visitors should fill us with hope and enthusiasm for what true access can mean. I have great faith in Ben Parks and Recreation's ability to design and build spaces that don't just meet ADA standards, but go beyond them. Miller's Landing is a perfect example. Its development reflected thoughtful planning and meaningful collaboration with community members and partners, capturing the true spirit of inclusive and accessible recreation. Should DPRD receive the award and acquire the property, I hope they return to COBAC and we have another opportunity to help shape accessibility design, elevating lived experience and ensuring that inclusion is integrated at the heart of the project. With gratitude, Liz Woodfin.
Any other questions regarding the letter to DPRD?
This is Amanda. No, that was beautiful. Much thanks to Liz for doing that.
Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number eight, the twenty-twenty-six COBAC Work Plan Workshop. We have about twenty-five minutes allocated for this.
Uh, this is Cassandra. I see that, I see that John has muted, um, but I'll, I'm just, I'm kicking it back to you all. Um, and this time is for you all to really put out your ideas, think about the things that you'd like to see. I have a slide in here of items that we are still working on, including our taxi letter, um, our, um, lunch and learn for trauma-informed care. So there are things that are going to join us, I hope, in the twenty-twenty-six work plan. There'll be continuations, but this is just a time, um, for, for COBAC, um, in chambers online for folks to share ideas, hopes, dreams of what next year, uh, the accomplishments that we can create together, what we really want to do um, as a, as a committee. Um, and then also I, I know that, um, we're missing, um, Andrew, Whitney and Liz uh, today. So I'll reach out individually to see, you know, I'll collect all of the ideas from today and we'll put them in kind of a more, uh, maybe buckets of sorts for December's meeting. And then we can start to vote and adopt things as we need potentially between December and January. So um, either Amanda or John, if you want to facilitate the conversations, but I have, um, a, a series of questions on the next slide. So thank you all.
Yeah, um, this is John Halen. Um, as far as projects, uh, what would we like to see as part of? we like to see as part of our plan for twenty twenty-six? Um, I have my own personal thoughts on what I think we can do as a committee, um, that would be beneficial to the people we represent or, or um, try to represent as best we can. Um, but I'm, I'm down to hear other people's ideas first unless you guys want me to kick it off.
This is Amanda. Thanks, John. I can't wait to hear your ideas. Um, uh, I have some ideas too, but I'm, I guess I'm trying to figure out how and that's where I guess you come in. So my, I have thoughts around um, pulling people in who, who might need support in having their voices heard. Um, how do we do that? Like how it's the um, the process for that? Like Cassandra, if you could maybe speak to that a little bit, like, um, I would love to see like, um, I don't know, I don't know what it looks like, like COBAC or or somebody can be a member of COBAC and have, I've, I've talked about this before, but we've struggled with how to implement it. I think there's, I don't know if it's a legal thing or what, like how it actually works, but if somebody was supporting another person because of their cognitive differences or because of their expressive language differences, um, but that person who is experiencing those differences was the actual member or, and then somebody could support them, um, that's like somehow pulling people in who maybe are would like to be involved, but have a lot of barriers to being involved. Um, how can, what are some ways we can facilitate making that happen? Um, also, how can we, um, participate uh, in a more meaningful way in these big projects that are happening in our city? Um, I don't know. Is there anything more we can do? I feel like Parks and Rec and um, like we just heard from the design team, that's wonderful, like, um, but is there a way that we can say, okay, we're gonna have two members of COBAC there at December, on December second to be at that open house and be more, like have more of a commitment to those types of things and having a stronger voice at the table for those types of things. Um, then, I don't know, John mentioned something like this, and maybe John, you'll talk more about it, but I think it's a good idea where we develop um, a template of sorts for a letter when, um, when people ask us to support their RFPs, their request for proposals for grants. So like when Parks and Rec comes to us and it doesn't take us forever to get them a letter, like we just have kind of a, a template that we've all agreed on and we can make some minor changes to it depending on the specific project. Um, just to reduce the amount of time that it takes for us to um, produce something like that and support our community, because we definitely want to do that. Um, but in a, in a, in a meaningful way. Those are my thoughts.
Yeah, my, uh, this is John. Oh, go ahead, Carl.
Uh, if you're gonna respond to that, go ahead. I got some, something else.
Yeah, um, so this is John Halen. Um, a few ideas I had were we just have to accept that writing a letter as a committee is going to take some time. It's going to take anywhere from two to three months if we're being realistic. Um, even if we have a template, I mean, each grant application is going to be unique enough that we're going to have to tweak it a little bit to fit exactly what we need. Um, I, having served on this committee for many years, um, sometimes I get frustrated when I see things like, you know, the contract negotiations with the electrical scooter company, like nobody came and talked to us about that. And we all know that from previous experience, there is a serious issue with accessibility issues with people leaving those all over the sidewalks. Um, so I think that was kind of like a wake-up call to me that I really want this committee to just start throwing elbows around. Um, and what that looks like for me is I would like to have everyone write in what, what thing would they like COBAC to talk about in the community and address as a community, as a committee that we can write letters? Because that's what we are. We're an advisory committee. We can write letters to Eric King. We can write letters to DPRD. That is like one of our superpowers. Um, so I would love to come up with a list of twelve things with the goal of writing one letter a month. And that means because of our extended timeline of, you know, two to three months approval for a letter, I would love to have multiples in the pipeline so that every meeting we at least approve one letter to be sent out. And it can be about taxis. It can be about accessibility in the parks. It can be about, you know, parking downtown and people, you know, not parking in the right spots. Um, I would love to hear what everyone says as far as what they would like to be addressed, you know, like the sidewalks, like let's start writing letters to Public Works. Let's start writing letters. Um, because I feel like, um, you know, especially just the, the electric scooter thing just really kind of made it apparent that people just don't think about us. Um, and I'm tired of that. So let's uh, hold our breath and stomp our feet and start letting people know that we exist again. And um, the other thing I'd like to do is to have a portal on our website where people can um, record public comment. You know, upload a video or share it or um, because I think it is hard for people to come in midday to give public comment. I would love to see uh, an interface that allows people to easily write into us or upload a two-minute video. And then during our public comment, which we generally don't have a lot of people, um, we just play those videos. Um, and we play videos from people, you know, that have recorded public comment for the last month, um, what they, what they want to see in the community. And I think that would be a great way to kind of um, cast a wider net as far as getting people to come talk to us.
This is Carl. Um, thanks, John. I like those ideas, especially the asynchronous public comment thing. That's great. Um, this is kind of an obvious one, but I was thinking about it um, earlier in the meeting when uh, we heard about plans for a new city hall, um, or, you know, city government building. I think there's definitely a role play or there should be for COBAC in um, those discussions. And, you know, how can we, how can we go beyond uh, ADA accessibility and envision a truly um, universal design accessible space for city government um, in the future. I don't think it's too early for us to start having that conversation, but I think is like really close to the original core function of this body or advising city government about the more accessible.
This is Amanda. I totally am on board with John and Carl. I agree. And I think it's never too early to get, to get involved. I guess I'm curious, how do we do that? Like I, I love the letter writing thing. We could do, we could write a letter, um, one of our focus letters could be, uh, or letters could focus on, um, oh, to Eric King about city hall or whoever, like who's doing that? Are we so early in the process that we don't even know what's going on? Like, and how do we find out about that? How are we, how can we be, uh, considered? Or how do people know that we are here so that, like with the electric bike thing, um, uh, how do we know? How do we find out about it before things are happening, before decisions are made? Um, is it just, I don't think it's just the letter writing. I think it's, it's that and something else. Like what else do we do?
This is John. Um, I really think if we ramp up our letter writing, um, it would draw more attention to us, which would make people include us, like the fact that we didn't even show up as a blip on the radar for the contract negotiations with the uh, e-bikes. It was kind of like a, I don't know, it really kind of felt like a slap to the face. Um, and I feel like if we start going really hard, I mean, you could see from the Human Rights and Equity Committee, like when they called an emergency meeting, that made news and people were like, oh yeah, they exist. Um, and it's, it sucks that that's how you get attention. Um, but I feel like for people to include us from now on, they have to know that we're paying attention and that we are going to be holding them accountable. Um, and that comes directly, I think, I think through the letter writing campaign, we can directly address stuff like that, like, you know, I would imagine us writing a letter saying something as simple as please include us in design ideas for, you know, city hall or include us as part of the, um, as the planning process at some point, uh, we'd appreciate it in a nice way. Um, also saying, hey, if you're going to be rewriting the contract for the e-bike company next summer, um, we want to be part of that contract because we, this was unacceptable, what happened. And I think it's okay to be a little upset. I mean, I personally, um, I'm just ready to start pushing boundaries and being a little bit more aggressive as a committee. Um, because I feel like sometimes it's easy to overlook us and I don't want that to happen.
Liz?
Yeah, this is Liz, Deether Martin online. Um, you know, one, one thing as I noticed, you know, we are embarking on these massive infrastructure projects to make it safe to walk and bike and roll um, around town. And it's still a cultural issue. It's still a need for people to understand that the streets and the sidewalks are for everybody. Um, and we gotta share them, that we gotta be nice to each other. And um, you know, I think we could spend a heck of a lot mu- less money and concre- and you know, install a lot less concrete. Um, if we can somehow get people to, oh, I, I am trying not to swear here, to slow down and treat each other like neighbors. Um, so as a, you know, accessibility advisory committee, you know, I, I, I'd like to be injecting those ideas into um, some of the things we talk about and just see how brainstorm on, on, um, you know, how we can help everybody understand that this place, this space, this city, this, you know, and our infrastructure is for everybody. Um, and not just for the people with the biggest vehicles and the stinkiest vehicles. Okay. I'm about to rant, so I will stop speaking.
This is John. Uh, Liz, it, it, you know, when uh, Councilor Mendez was talking, I immediately was thinking, oh, I remember Councilor Mendez bringing up a year or two ago, the idea of a universal speed limit in the city of Bend of twenty-five miles an hour, which would I think be a great thing for maybe us as a committee to have a letter to city council and Eric King saying, hey, a while back, it was discussed that there might be a universal speed limit. Where do we stand on that? Is that still an interest? You know, studies have shown that people survive accidents when they're at lower speeds as soon as you go below twenty-five miles an hour. Um, so that's the kind of thing that I want to be more proactive about as far as, um, kind of, uh, yeah, just, just, you know, like I said, throwing elbows.
Yeah, yeah. I think we, you know, we have to figure out enforcement because people are already mad about how fast people are driving. I, every, you know, uh, everywhere I hear people like, my God, what's going on? Why can't this be enforced? So, um, you know, if, if it's scary to walk or roll on our streets, which, and we're always pushed out onto the streets because sidewalks are so weird. Um, oh, another rant coming. Um, uh, you know, that's an accessibility issue. So that that is for us to, to address as well.
This is Ian Isaacson. Um, on the point about, you know, getting involved early and often, like how important that is on a project, especially some of these large infrastructure projects. Um, I can't speak to the city's process or the county's process. Um, but the Park District, when, you know, myself or our other landscape architect started a project, literally the very first thing we do is we have what's called a public involvement plan. And we lay out from the start kind of a list of stakeholders who we think are gonna or should be involved from the very start on that project. It usually includes, depending on the project, um, different NGOs in town, different stakeholder groups, um, neighborhood associations and things like that. And so uh, you know, someone had brought up earlier, you know, identifying maybe one or two people. Well, it could be everybody, but because there's so many land use things happening in town, um, you know, ge- getting on those stakeholder lists for all of these projects at the very start is it, at least it, it's a way to get informed of something is happening. And then that gives the committee the ability from the very start to make the decision and have the conversation. Is this something we want to engage in or not? Um, but that's, you know, getting contacted early through that process is, is probably a really good way to do that.
This is, um, this is Cassandra and I'm just, I'm taking notes and appreciate all of your thoughts and feedback and kind of combining what so many of you have shared, Carl and, and John and Liz and uh, Ian um, and Amanda. Um, it sounds like there is a deep desire to, um, and again, that would need to be something that's adopted by the group, but really be more included and invited. And maybe the preliminary letter is to Eric talking about a desire to be in front of and uh, invited and part of that stakeholder list for directors who have big projects coming up. But just a reminder about what the committee does, our charter, uh, the interest that we have from the group. Um, I think that sounds like the formulation of a really nice kickoff letter in January of like, we're, th- this year, we're very committed to the following initiative and we really want to be visiting. We want to see more involvement and uh, to utilize this committee as the subject matter experts in accessibility that we are. So that could be something that we contemplate, but I'm, I'm, I'm kind of sensing this overarching theme, um, if you will, and, and, um, yeah, just great, great conversations thus far. So thanks, thanks for this.
Um, this is Stephanie in chambers and, um, you know, I've, I moved to Bend in two thousand and five, so I've been here for about twenty years now. And it feels like um, since I've been here, Bend has always been in a state of trying to play catch-up with growth. Um, and by the time, you know, look, look at the Hawthorne Crossing project, you know, that was brought to us a couple of years ago. It's not going to be finished until twenty twenty-nine. Um, what will the needs of the city be at that point? Now, this is pedestrian bridge, so it's not that big of an issue. But like when I think about the Reed Market construction that shut down Reed Market for years while they were um, redoing the railroads and redoing the road. And it's already congested. It's outdated. Um, and so now there is discussion about redoing that. So what a part of what I'm really curious, and I know I've already asked, um, the mayor about this, and she insists that, that they do have, um, developers do a traffic study, um, and a traffic plan before they're allowed to start a development, but maybe like, what are the requirements to, to make sure that the infrastructure that's in place, or if they're going to be doing some infrastructure improvements, road improvements, they really can handle the increased traffic to a new neighborhood or a new shopping center or a new apartment complex. Um, but then can't they build in, can't we require that not only they do a traffic study and plan, but also incorporate pedestrian and cyclist plans in that? So how can you accommodate and, and, you know, uh, because I think if you want to try to get connectivity via pedestrians, cyclists and roller throughout the city is going to be, you're going to have to piecemeal this together. So if we have all of the developers try to um, it have, enforce, force them to build this into their plan, then maybe that's one way of trying to be ahead of the the plan instead of trying to play catch-up after everything's built. And then we're like, oh, wow. Well, now the infrastructure can't meet the, the demands. Um, and I know just with, I mean, it is a cultural thing too. We've got a lot of um, native. I mean, it is a cultural thing too. We've got a lot of, um, native, um, Bendites who resent the amount of growth. Um, and I, I'm not trying to call any one group out, but you've got this influx of p- of tourists that come in the summertime and then again in the wintertime that are adding to the congestion and you're, you know, somebody's trying to get from point A to point B and they're not used to having all of these cars that they have to navigate around. That's when you're getting really unsafe driving habits. You know, they're darting around cars, they're gunning it through, um, yellow lights or red lights or there's, you know, going five miles an hour through a roundabout. It's unsafe and it's due to frustration. It's due to frustration because the city's constantly behind on meeting the traffic needs and the pedestrian needs of the city. Um, but then, um, you have this cultural thing too, that with, with some of our our residents that just resent the amount of growth that's happened here in Bend and are frustrated. And so that's just what I'm seeing in my twenty years that I've been here. Um, as part of the problem, it's, it's complicated and it's tangled and it's gonna take, I think, a lot of different um, pieces to make this all work. Um, but when we wanna try to ensure the safety of pedestrians and cyclists and, um, we, uh, rollers through the city, we've got to address this. Um, and how do we, how do we make it safe? And how do we put some of that ownership on the developers that are building? Um, because we're only gonna grow. I don't know, it's just my two cents. It's complicated, but I think that we have to be a little more stringent on the requirements for people who, developers who are, are planning new communities, um, and new construction.
Uh, this is John. In the interest of, uh, keeping up with the agenda, are there any other comments on this twenty twenty-six work plan that anyone would like to say?
Um, John, this is Cassandra. The, wanted to float an idea past you all too. Take it, leave it. Um, had, had the pleasure of serving as the HREC, uh, city staff liaison when I first joined the city, which was a little bit ago, but, um, in that time, um, our chair at the time, Manoj Alapuria, um, had a position within HREC, which I believe still exists in some form to this day, um, where it was, it was deemed or called the counselor connector. Um, and really what their task was, was to meet kind of has standing meetings with the city councilor who's designated to the, to the, um, commission. So in this case, it'd be Councilor Mendez. Um, but to meet more robustly specifically around city council initiatives and kind of keep a pulse on what was coming down, probably the pike at future meetings to be aware of potentially like that Venn diagram of what accessibility considerations there may be with that real specific lens. And so if that's something somebody wanted to have capacity to, to formalize that within our kind of charter, um, something to think about, but a different way for us to be plugged in more than just like what, you know, accessibility staff already do, but just to really understand where potentially some of that synergy for getting in front of people, um, and directors and getting projects understood and inviting them to COBAC might be a different way to be able to do that, but I just thought that was a really cool um, position that Manoj created back for HREC and it, maybe it might land for COBAC members. It might be something that we just more to, kinda wanna have as something that's, um, a standing update quarterly or the projects or, or to, I think it was Liz, you made the point of attending maybe that January meeting, right? Like, how do you become more engaged in potentially city councils initiatives and not just reliant on kind of the very short update, which we are gr- very grateful for from Councilor Mendez, but more of a robust consideration from an accessibility lens. So just put that out there as something to, to put on the table for, um, all the contemplations for, uh, the twenty twenty-six work plan.
Uh, this is John. Yeah, I think maybe our first letter should be to, to, uh, Eric King, the city manager, saying, hey, we exist, consider us. We kind of feel left out, especially because of these specific examples. Going forward, we wanna be included on any major projects that you think will impact the people we represent. And our community members. To close this off, I would ask that people start thinking about one to as many items as you can think of, uh, things you would like us to write as a committee, as a letter. And we can come up with a list, we can all vote on a, on a, on a list of, you know, the top twelve. Um, but I'd really like to get started on having letters in the pipeline so that every meeting we can send at least one out. Um, I know that's an ambitious goal, but I feel like I'm going to give this a shot and see what happens. And if it doesn't work, then it doesn't work, but at least I've tried.
And John, I think that as a body, they would need to adopt that, um, that plan as a whole, um, to be able to say this is what COBAC wants to do going forward in terms of the letter planning. So we could pop that into the, the December agenda for voting and the general work plan. So that sounds like a great, these are really good ideas. I'm very excited for, for the future.
Do we have any digital tools available to us that, um, we, uh, could do like, um, you know, like a brainstorming exercise where you, you just, you, you know, you, you make little basically little post-it notes and slap them up on a board and, and, um, I mean, we could try to meet in person and do it. But, uh, I've just found that effective in, um, work scenarios where, uh, it really gets the energy going if you're, if you're brainstorming with someone else. Um, and, um, maybe that's, uh, difficult for us to do online or we could, you know, pair up group, you know, in our small groups, so we're not a quorum. Uh, um, you know, uh, if, if you want to, if anybody wants to brainstorm with someone else, uh, I guess, I, I'll say I'm available and, um, maybe that's an idea that others could do too. So.
Yeah, this is John. I know that city council has like an executive meeting that they do where they go on a retreat for a couple of days and figure out what they wanna do. Um, we probably aren't gonna do that.
Open to the public.
It would have to be, uh, if it's more than just three of us or four of us, then it would have to be a regular meeting, which I'm down to do. Um,
Right, but I don't think retreats have to be o- uh, open to the public.
Yeah, I think as long as we post, if I understand correctly, I mean, we could record the audio and post minutes from it. I think that might be enough, but we'd have to double check with, uh, Ian Leithizer Esquire on that one.
Yeah.
Um, okay. Well, we'll, uh, table that, uh, these ideas until December to vote on them. Um, any other comments before we move on? All right. Agenda item number nine, the COBAC Roundtable. This is an opportunity for people to talk about what's going on in their world and and, uh, anything they'd like to bring up to the public or to the committee in general. I guess I could kick it off. Uh, this is John Halen again. Um, I started a group called the High Desert Urbanists. And the idea is that in my role as a housing advocate, I consistently kept bumping into things that I wanted to have an opinion on, but weren't specifically housing related. They were more like housing adjacent. Uh, we could talk about, you know, public transit, we could talk about bike lanes, we could talk about pedestrian infrastructure. Is that important to housing? Very much so. But, uh, in my role as a housing advocate, it's called Mission Creep and we wanna stay focused on just one thing. Um, so I started a group called High Desert Urbanists and it's gonna be a coalition of people from all different groups, uh, you know, Bend bikes, um, you know, Bend YIMBY, uh, we're reaching out to housing, houseless advocates, we're reaching out to um, anyone that's interested in, you know, uh, like, commercial residential, basically. Um, Central Oregon Land Watch is gonna be a part of it, or at least, you know, be a member, but the idea is to get all these different groups together to talk about a complete picture, um, because so many of our different things are in different sectors and we want them to talk together. And we want the ability to be able to provide input on things that aren't just housing related, or at least I would. Um, so yeah, uh, if you, if anyone's interested, hit me up. Uh, yeah, High Desert Urbanists, we're probably gonna do our first meeting in December, um, to talk about what a complete community looks like and where we can be proactive and if it even makes sense to get together as a group. And, um, a lot of what we're talking about here made me think of that also.
Thanks, John. That's cool.
Anyone else?
Uh, this is Liz Deether Martin, uh, attending virtually again. Um, I just wanted to point out, prob- I don't know if everybody's, um, heard about this, um, Alice Wong died uh, recently, a few days ago. Uh, she was a fierce uh, accessibility advocate, um, kind of, yeah, uh, ah, another, another hard, hard, hard hit to, to lose her. We've lost a, a lot of these really amazing advocates, but, um, she started the Disability Visibility, um, projects, um, hmm, about ten years ago or something. Um, and it came from like StoryCorps where she was just writing about some, um, or collecting stories, you know, to share for this one year thing. And then it, it just kept going on and on and on and became quite a resource and a, and a, and a place to, um, um, share stories and understand people a little bit better. So, um, that's again, the Disability Visibility Project, if you haven't heard about it, um, I highly recommend it. Um, anyway, so, uh, yeah, we lost a, we lost a good one recently, so.
Uh, this is John. Um, I had another experience recently that I thought I'd bring up. This goes back to a conversation I had with, uh, COBAC maybe two years ago. I was on a flight up here to Juneau and, um, there was, uh, someone with disabilities who was placed at the very back of the plane, who could barely walk. And this person had to slowly walk to the front of the plane while we all waited and I could see the, the grief at their face of having to have that public spectacle of knowing that everyone wants to get off the plane, but they all have to wait for this person and it just really, it was really awful. And it just really hit me hard about, you know, reminded me of the talk about the FAA and about how they were thinking of requiring planes to have same thing they have on airplane, or on, uh, buses where you just, you can roll your chair onto the plane and it just latches down and it's fixed. And it just makes me, it just, it really showed me that even with all this progress, even though ADA is like a shining beacon for the rest of the world as far as how to accommodate people, there's still so much so much work that needs to be done. And, and continues to need to be done. And yeah, it's, the world's not perfect, but we gotta, we gotta fight.
This is Carl. I've got something. Um, I just read about how Oregon is the first quote unquote accessibility verified state travel destination. This is something from, um, came out of a partnership between Travel Oregon and this website called Wheel the World, which does accessible travel to commercial website. Um, and we, Wheel the World does do great work. They go around and they like actually on the ground measure accessibility of different hotels, uh, attractions, that kind of thing. And then they compile a lot of different, a lot of great information and then they like, you know, have this stamp of approval that they offer called Accessibility Verified. That's just their own thing, but, um, kind of feel to see state of Oregon being recognized for accessibility.
Thank you, Carl. Um, all right. Well, in the interest of finishing on time, we have, uh, I had agenda item number ten, Accessibility Equity Manager Update with Cassandra.
Thank you, John. Um, just wanted to follow up on a few things. I will be sending you, um, an email shortly, um, with the PowerPoint presentation from Garrett. Thanks, um, Garrett to you and your team for joining us today. Um, and there'll be those links in there where you all can review it. Um, and if you wanna let me know either by email, um, that'd be wonderful. If you would like to have Garrett, um, and his team back, uh, for follow-up questions or further conversation, or if you feel um, there are messages you wanna pass on to him via me or just directly to him, please feel free to do that. So just an ask to understand kind of the pulse and I know we'll get to the agenda item coming up on that. Um, if that's something we wanna do. Um, I'll also be forwarding an email that I received, um, that I opted not to share in public comment today, but came from a student uh, discussing, uh, student housing and wanted to make, uh, the group aware of some of the concerns that they have faced, um, and barriers to, um, housing as a disabled individual in our community and student. Um, they wanted to make the group aware of, so I'll be sharing that, um, out with you as well. Um, and like I said, I will reach out to Andrew, Whitney and Liz to see if they'd like other contemplations or ideas put forth for the twenty twenty-six, uh, work plan. Liz, I really like your idea of being able to kind of put something in a maybe an electronic. I know there's like the Murrow boards of something where everyone could log in. I wanna be mindful that there are different ways that people feel comfortable sharing. So this is one of them. I really encourage everyone to please continue to email ideas, um, or contemplations so we can put them all together for the December meeting and if we feel like that timeline is too rushed, I know we've approved, uh, previous work plans come February, so um, we could certainly defer, bump it to January if we wanna have more conversation or if, uh, vote is not clear. So um, those are a few things that I just wanted to, to pass along. Um, and as, uh, Liz, you so beautifully mentioned, um, really just, um, remembering Alice Wong as just such a incredible light, um, and such the oracle, as she called herself, of disability, justice and advocacy and all things that are good. Um, and, uh, it, it is, I, I know that, you know, I, I think we've had conversations before about this book. Um, I know that, um, encouraged all of you to like go put stories in, in that project, um, which started in twenty fourteen, but it continued to kind of accumulate via this amazing online forum. Um, we just wanted to take a minute to really be able to, to spend time in thinking about Alice, um, and thanking Alice for the tremendous contributions she uh, she contributed over her lifetime and just being that person she was. There was a, most recently in twenty twenty-two, um, uh, her, her biography came out of an activist's life, A Year of the Tiger. So that's out. If anyone has time during this, uh, next couple of months with holidays or you have a couple of days, phenomenal work, um, like, and, and just funny as hell. It just quite, quite, um, it says incisive wit, joy and rage, and that is, if that isn't true. So, um, as Alice, um, came to came to really realize that she was passing, um, she, she wrote, uh, she penned a letter, um, to everyone, uh, in the community just to let them know. And I thought I'd share that here. Um, hi, everyone. It looks like I ran out of time. I have so many dreams that I wanted to fulfill and plans to create new stories for you. There are a few in progress that might come to fruition in the next, in the few years if things work out. I did not ever imagine I would live to this age and end up a writer, editor, activist and more. As a kid riddled with insecurity, internalized ableism, I could not see a path forward. It was thanks to friendships and some great teachers who believed in me that I was able to fight my way out of miserable situations into a place where I finally felt comfortable in my skin. We need more stories about us and our culture. Our wisdom is incisive and unflinching. I'm honored to be your ancestor and believe disabled oracles like us will light the way to the future. And Alice passed away on November fourteenth of this year. So, um, with that, uh, wishing you all very happy holidays, uh, upcoming, however you celebrate them and the renditions that they come up with. Um, very much looking forward to our December meeting and our work plan for ahead. Uh, John, back to you.
Yeah, so, uh, for item number eleven, uh, it's one thirty currently, so we'll try and make this quick. Um, are there any agenda items that people would like to bring up for the next meeting? That haven't already been mentioned? That haven't already been mentioned? Okay. All right. Due to the December holiday, the next COBAC meeting will be on, on an alternate date on Thursday, December eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, from one to two thirty PM. Uh, I am adjourning the meeting at exactly two thirty PM. Thank you all so much. I had a really great time this meeting.
Thank you. Thank you.
So Stephanie, on the, um, like, traffic plans and stuff.